Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's council meeting. It's always nicer when we have more people in the audience than we have on the council. The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which is a listing of items to be acted upon with a single motion and vote. It's designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by council. I will ask if a citizen or a council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion. And at that time, a member of the audience or a council member may make the request that an item be removed prior to council's vote. The items on tonight's consent agenda include approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes for December the 10th, 2019, approval of the expenditure vouchers for January the 14th, 2020, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for El Bureau Pancho, Doing Businesses Gustavos, approval of a renewal fermented malt beverage liquor license for Safeway, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for the Hong Kong Chinese restaurant, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for Rogers, Inc., Doing Businesses Shiloh Steakhouse, and the approval of a special event permit for the Cortez area Chamber of Commerce to host a business after hours event at Southwest Health Systems on January the 23rd. At this time, is there anybody in the audience or anyone on council that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I don't have any.
If not, may I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the addition of $1,885.08.
Second.
Lucero.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Betz.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Cheek.
Aye.
We have no presentations tonight. At this time, you have the opportunity for instant participation. If you would like to address council on an item that is not on the agenda, you may go to the mic, state your name and your address. Please be sure, like I had to do, that you turn the mic on. You will also have four minutes, so if you'll watch the clock, the timekeeper will start it, and as the time begins to speed up, that means you need to finish up.
Test? My name is Charles Jeeter. I'm a member of the Four Corners Pistol and Rifle Club. I'm going to list my address as 1401 County Road 25, Cortez, Colorado. And I'm speaking about the land use code. Couple of things I want to start off with. I grew up in Mankas. I love Cortez. I was here when the first McDonald's came into town, okay? I've got a picture, and I sent out an email to everybody this morning. It was pretty hot. I understand. But you have to understand how much I love this area, and Cortez is the center of this region. It's not just about Cortez with 85, 8700 people. It's everybody across three different states, okay? So that's why I'm talking about this right now. I'm a veteran of the United States Navy. I have a private investigator license in New Mexico, and right now I'm a San Diego State student for urban studies and planning. That's how I got involved with this. I love this region, and as a matter of fact, I'm wearing this jacket right now. I still have blood on it from a sheep that was butchered down in north of Gallup on the reservation for a womanhood ceremony. So I'm going to take this off real quick. The denay are part of this discussion as well, I might say, okay? And we literally ate mutton farm to table. Can't get it any fresher than that. The other thing I want to say is that this jacket I'm wearing, this speaks towards the aesthetics. I've heard the whole reason for this land use code coming in is because we have an issue with the aesthetics. Christmas Day, about nine o'clock in the morning or so, I was out in the mountains, Chicken Creek Ski Trail, cross-country ski with my son, and a lady who's the librarian from Mankas decided she wanted to talk to me about my jacket. That's too much. Those patches are too much. And I'm listening to her, and I'm thinking, huh, that's interesting. I'm a little detached from that. But that sense of ethics, she doesn't, or excuse me, the sense of aesthetics, she doesn't have an idea of why I'm wearing this jacket. My son, four years ago, wore this jacket when he was skiing downhill over at Wolf Creek Pass. Worked great for him in the wintertime, okay? Her aesthetics and mine did not match. Often, that's in the eye of the beholder, which is a problem when you're trying to do land use code, especially when you're trying to do beautification and things like that, all right? I would say most people in Cortez are like me on that ski run. They want it to be left the hell alone, okay? So I want to tell you that I really believe in land use code. I wouldn't be getting into this career if I didn't. Somehow, I'm here at the right time to go ahead and do these things, but I want to let you know that there's a specific point I want to make. It's not no to code, it's not now. This code is wrong. There's a lot of things wrong with the application process of it. The mayor's been in it from the beginning. Council, I've got some issues with you as well, but I will say, in the interest of time, you should vote no on this, okay? There's lots of things I would love to go ahead and tell you the planners are doing right. This code is not one of them, all right? "The code, once adopted, puts burden of proof upon the citizen for litigation or change." That is a fact. It was not brought to the council's attention according to the minutes before they took a vote on this initially. That irritates me, okay? I feel it's disingenuous at the least. Outreach was not performed as specified in the grant application. Business owners think they're being targeted, and fines have quintupled. In a city of Cortez with 25% under the poverty rate, I don't understand what you think you're going to accomplish with that. Clearly, my time is running out, and I would like to go ahead and say thank you for this opportunity, and I'll be back again in a minute.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. There's a solution to this, and I think that Planner Hughes mentioned something along those lines. We're probably not completely aligned, but you can begin again involving all stakeholders not initially identified. The beautiful thing about this, you know what? Sometimes sausage is ugly trying to make it, but it tastes great. And this is how the sausage is made. This is how communities show up. This is an amazing crowd of people right now, and this isn't even the day we're supposed to actually vote on this. So I think that's fantastic. But with all this public interest, just think of it as one investment, one huge investment in outreach, because now everybody's engaged. Business owners are a minority. I don't know if people think of them that way, but it's just like we've got about 15% denay and we've got probably about 15 to 18%, something like Hispanic business owners. I don't know, it's probably what, like 5%? I don't know how many people actually own businesses. And that's not actually just the ones who get licenses. That's the non-traditional businesses as well. I think it's been identified before about the ability to go ahead and have up to six kids in your home as a babysitter, all right? That is one of those things that's made harder through this code. So adopting this code penalizes both the people who actually get business licenses and contribute direct tax revenue into the system or into the city of Cortez, and the people who just make cash money, and then they go out and spend it. And when they spend it, it's taxed, and it's incirculation. I come up here, I get my, you know what, like this jacket right here. If there's a rip in it, I go over to sew-by-sew, and I get it taken care of here. Every dollar I spend in this county, every dollar I spend in this city goes to the residents, period. If I go buy gas that costs Conoco, it goes into this community. That's what I do. I enjoy doing that, okay? I think we can repeat the process and mandate that planning add transparency into the process a lot more. I've had a chance to meet with some people who are involved with the planning commission, and I think their hearts are in the right place. They have good intentions. Unfortunately, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. So the way to fix that is to have more transparency in the entire system, okay? I think performing the outreach as intended through the heart and soul methods, including business owners as just another minority group, will work. And you've got to kill that fine increase, okay? That's absolutely insane. $2,500 or $2,650, that's the maximum fine in Colorado, and I understand that. This is Cortez. I can't think of anybody who could pay that. And I can just think of the way, of course, there are good people working here, but imagine somebody gets hit by a truck one day, and you get another person in who's not exactly as gentle or kind, and they want to actually enforce the law in a certain way, or they want to enforce it against certain people more than others. When you have vagueness in the code, you're letting the door open to corruption, okay? And there's not a law enforcement post-certified officer out there, and probably not a lot of veterans, who haven't seen bad laws or the application of kind of a loosey-goosey method of doing things, all right? We don't want it. There's 40% of the households, according to the VFW commander, 40% of the households here in Monzuma County, in Delores County also, are veterans. Somebody has somebody in the service, they've been in the service, that kind of thing. It's our time to basically go ahead and start helping with this process. That's kind of a call to action to all you guys who are out there, you know, just having a six-pack. We need to get back in this, all right? This is the part that we need to do. We've been overseas, let's go ahead and come back and do these things. Okay, there's lots of reasons to vote no on this land use code. There's negative impacts. There's a lack of candor, frankly, I think, from the city attorney, lack of transparency. The planning commission and the planning department, we've addressed all those right now. There's expectations of the grant that we had with a massive outreach promised, and the Phase 3 of Heart and Soul was ignored, and it needs to be actually addressed. Thank you for the time.
Honorable Mayor, I would like to reach my full business.
No. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to lay this out here. The heart and soul methods are actually very good. We're trying to turn around on how we do zoning right now in America. Zoning's only been around for about 100 years. They call it Euclidian zoning, because that was the first landmark case in the Supreme Court that pretty much put it out there where you could have industrial away from houses, and you could have commercial somewhere else, you know? They tried to basically buffer these things based on an industrial age. We don't really have that anymore. We have this big blurring of things. You know, I know there's a guy, who is it, Seth? He runs the Goods for the Woods, and he puts together rifles right there. Technically, that's manufacturing, but it's not. It's gunsmithing, but it's complicated, but it's on a small scale. He's not hurting anybody, okay? And it's something that he can do as part of his job inside that commercial building, but technically, it's industrial. He's actually doing things that are of industrial nature, all right? Now, you can classify these things down to the nth degree, but the fact is, a lot of people can do things like Seth. They can actually do this in their home or their garage, and they make money, and they spend that money in Cortez. And that's the funny thing. Even if they're out in Monzuma County, or they're out in San Juan County, either New Mexico or Utah, they're going to spend that money here. When people are enabled to do things, they come here to spend their money, okay? So when we make decisions that hurt business here, we're raising prices for the people who live all over the place. That includes the denay on the reservation, it includes the southern ute, or excuse me, the mountain ute, and it includes other people that are all the way over in San Juan County in Utah, all right? We have to be very careful about how we actually apply making new laws, all right? That being said, there is a place for code, all right? There were some public record statements about outreach, but I think Tracy hit a lot of those in the meeting before this, so I won't beat it up too much. It's in my write-up. I think everybody's got that. I have to say, you can't call it good outreach if you have three meetings over nine days. Even if you have multiple other meetings, and I've looked at the paper, and they've talked about a lot of these other things, that's the old way of doing things. That's the old way of doing planning. There was a write-up that was actually done in 2017 lauding Cortez. They were talking about how great it was here and what excellent outreach they had, and that was done by the foundation that did the heart and soul, the Orton Foundation, okay? I don't think they know we're here tonight. I don't think they know we're having this problem. I really hope we can solve this, and we can continue to use those methods that reach out to everybody, and I think everybody's on board with that. What that means is, we're going to have to probably kill this and make it better. So here's one vision I have for how to do that, and this doesn't mean it's the best way to do it, but it's just something I'm tossing out there. There are things you can do that are very data-driven. You can actually look and say, how many enforcements do we have? What addresses? All that is spatial information. It can be analyzed in a way called GIS, Geographic Information Systems. In my opinion, I think that if you take the last 10 years of code or violations, you can find out what violations are actually being cited and what ones are being ignored, because your code compliance officers live in this community too. They're not evil mustache-twirling villains. They want to make sure they apply the law equally to everybody, and if they see slippery code, they just don't apply it to anybody. I think if you get those people to basically, and you don't have to ask them that many questions, you can just look at the data. If things aren't actually being enforced, you probably can start out with a clean slate and just wipe out your code right there and start as that, as a basic foundation, okay? That's probably the biggest thing I could say on that. I'm running out of time.
I'd like to relinquish my full business.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Sheldon. I'm a little sharp about City Attorney Green omitting the simple facts concerning code becoming law once adopted. I looked at the public record, and it said that he stated that the staff was committed to work with the community on any issues that anyone might have, and I get that. These are good people, all right? Nobody has the intentions of being evil. There is no hail hydrant in the hallways here, you know? There's no real force of darkness that's coming through. But the problem is, as I've said before, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. It only takes one or two people out of that system, the next thing you know, it goes by the wayside until five or six years later, and somebody gets cited because they don't like the way that their door looks, or they don't like the way that something else happens, or they find out you've got five kids in your daycare, and they want to make you make extra driveways or something like that, okay? All of these things are issues. I'm going to hit this again, and you hear me say this at least one more time. The code is law once adopted, period. There is no distinction about that. Whether or not somebody chooses to enforce that law gets slippery, and when you get slippery, you start bringing the room to have a little bit of corruption, and it's just in the human nature. I'm not saying these code compliance officers are bad, I'm not saying planners are bad, but we have to have good laws. We have good laws in this country because we're very careful about how we make them. I would hope people would make the laws or the code here like I make rules for my kids. I don't make rules I don't enforce, okay? Just pure and simple. I don't make arbitrary rules. I don't give them this complicated thing. And when we're talking about the rules that people are trying to actually understand, we need to understand that three out of four people in Cortez did not go to college, okay? We should be looking and analyzing how we write this code so it's legible to everybody. It's possible to do outreach where you can sit there with something called Mintymeter, and you can actually go ahead and ask people questions on their smartphones while they're sitting there in front of City Market, or they're sitting in front of Safeway, or Walmart, or they're at church or something else. You can just take a quick poll. Hey, I got this section of code. Does this make any sense to you? How does it make you feel? One to five. Really pissed off? Number five, okay? So those types of things are how you get feedback, and a lot of people can do this. Heck, we can get probably high school students to do it if you trust them well enough. It's just a matter of getting the data. A lot of this process can be run by data. It doesn't cost as much as you might think. We get that public opinion back, we find out how these things work, you kick it up the ladder a little bit, you start having group meetings and those kinds of things, all right? This is something that can be done right. All right. Minute forty, and I'm going to talk about land use code and the grant line compliance that I'm concerned about, all right? We talked about meeting attendance and public outreach back in 2014, according to the public record. I want to know more about how that took place. I want to know why there's not a cross-check. Okay, look, in aviation, you've got a pilot and copilot. They read off a checklist. You know how we don't kill you when we're flying around? Basically, you've got that copilot checking what you're doing. That's a cross-check, okay? There needs to be a function in here where people are cross-checking. When they do a grant or when they do something like this, they're checking in, they're checking up on what's going on. And what really bothered me was the fact that I went through the public record for the minutes, and although they were a little sparse compared to the county and how they did things straight-scanned in, what really bothered me was the fact that I didn't see any code, or I didn't see any reference to an ongoing project about the code. Like every quarter, if you're in a business that's public, every quarter, they're making updates on why they're spending your money doing something. I think we should follow the same kind of approach, and I think it should be formalized by the council as a directive down through planning. You can write laws, or you can write recommendations that they have to use, and I think that's really important to understand. You can go ahead and say, hey, we can make a better system, and you take the public input, and you say, look, this is never going to happen again. You make a promise to them. We're going to go ahead and fix this right now. We're going to write a few simple, common-sense rules on how you do these things. So it's not, there's no slip factor there, okay? I'm out of time.
Yeah, I do have a full business.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to hit the DOLA grant again. "The process was not adhered to as specified in the grant application. The massive community outreach campaign does not describe the current situation. This is not a consequence of massive community outreach." I want to go ahead and say that Planner Hughes already talked about this about maybe 30 minutes ago. I appreciate that. She already talked about it, and I think there are ways to do this better in the future, okay? "There's an argument against old code simply being recycled without change, and the reason why is because in the grant application, the existing code was identified as being inadequate and conflicting with itself. So the process was intended to, quote, 'include values of the community within types of regulation,'" unquote. That would have hopefully happened if Phase 3 of Heart and Soul would have been a repetitive process, and that's why I say, city council can actually say, look, this is how we want you to do this. You do your job this way, we're going to give you direction, which is good, and this probably works for the next city council as well. You don't have to tell them every single thing. We're all adults here, but you've got to give them a little bit of kind of bumpers on the, you know, what do they call them? Guardrails on the side of the road, so they don't go way off in the weeds, okay? So we have objections to adoption of the code right now as law. Regardless of promises made verbally, enforcement of the code can be done as the code is adopted. That's what scares people. It's not they don't trust you. It's not they don't think you're nice people. The fact is, once the code goes in, it's law, and it doesn't matter if it's you or 10 years down the road, somebody's kid owns the property they used to own, and somebody decides they don't like the way their driveway looks, okay? I've built a building. I built it from the ground up. I didn't know nothing. I hired a contractor on a day-by-day basis as I needed him, and I had an inspector who basically told me, and we went through the code, and he didn't read English the same way I did. He was from a different Asian country, and he didn't understand the same exact verbiage because he was not a native English speaker. So I've actually had those issues where English as a second language is a little bit of a struggle when you're looking at code. I had to wait, I had to stop process, and this is in Solano County, California, my dad's property. I had to stop process on what I was doing until I could appeal everything. It cost me at least $2,000 in a week's worth of time, okay? So I've actually seen this happen. Courts recognize the municipality, and the code is law once it's adopted. It renders the burden of proof on me, the citizen, for any challenge after adoption, okay? So a few things in your system and how things work right now. There's a bit of transparency that's lacking because you have two websites for planning, and that equals confusion. I came in, and Niva was very kind to actually bring her copy of the code up through the hallway to me to read it, because I couldn't find this stuff on the website. And I'm a pretty savvy guy. I'm probably about four classes short of my computer science degree when I switch fields, okay? So I couldn't find it because there's identical websites up there for planning committee and also for the planning department, all right? And on one of those, they didn't have any updates or anything said anything about code at all. So the problem is, the duplicate site navigation generates that kind of frustration and confusion for citizens, okay? If you see things as being controversial, you need to make this prevalent, either on your splash page for the entire county. Hey, look, we're working for you. We're working on new code. Or you put a directive down that says, you've got to update people on what you're doing. If it's a long-term project, stick that stuff on your page, okay? I've got about 30 seconds. "The problem with raising fines, it works to gain city revenue, but it alienates and disenfranchises the poorest of Cortez residents and businesses. People think businesses make a lot of money. The fact is..."
You have to find Cortez.
Oh, thank you very much. "The fact is, when you're a business owner, and I've run a couple of businesses, one of them was the investigation business I did back in the 90s in Albuquerque, and you spend more time trying to jump through hoops just to make sure that you are in compliance with whatever laws are there, along with actually trying to be innovative enough to actually be competitive with everybody else who's out there doing the same thing you're doing. And that takes an extreme amount of time and effort. It's a high amount of stress, and I don't think people really appreciate how much time and effort it takes just to employ people. The most people I've employed at any given time is five. That's it. I'm not like, you know, great, but I can tell you, I sympathize with people who make millions of dollars, because they have to have systems in place, and they have to create those systems. A tremendous amount of thinking goes into all this. When we start putting code down without thinking about exactly what we're doing and it impacts business, people just walk away. They may not vote, they'll just vote with their feet and say, you know what? It's been a good run. I'm out of here, I'm going to retire, okay? Cortez doesn't need that. We need more people, we need to stimulate growth in business. We need economic development. That buzzword in planning means you have somebody who's dedicated to business, understanding business, who's on the inside, who comes and talks to the businesses and says, hey, how can the city help you make more money? How can the city help you employ more people? Are there any regulations that you're having problems understanding? This happens. We actually, as a student, we have panels of people who come in. The economic developer or development person from Chula Vista came in, and this guy's amazing. His outreach is flawless. He and one of his workers, they go around to the businesses in Chula Vista, which is south of San Diego, and they actually ask the business owners, hey, how's everything going? He fields calls that come in for people looking to do business with the city of Chula Vista. There's no reason, I think, where Cortez probably could not benefit from having that position. Code is one of those things. If you have somebody on the inside behind the golden curtain over here who's actually looking at the code before you guys even bring it to the public, and they understand business, they're going to be able to go ahead and give you feedback in planning before it even gets out. It's another decision loop that I think would really benefit Cortez. And I'm not a believer in the regional, I say, regional government is good, but Region Nine doing all your economic development, I don't think they're going to have number one Cortez in mind. And even Region Nine does not cover everything in the other three states. So I really do think that if you have that, you're not going to run into issues with business owners or whatever with your code adoption in the future. So that's just a suggestion. Okay, so my conclusion, not no, but not now, which means unfortunately, according to what we're hearing, you're going to have to restart this code process completely. "The code descriptions are unclear, specifically for Cortez, Monzuma County, and you need clarity based on educational level you're trying to address. The fines are onerous. They need to be reviewed and accepted by all citizen groups most affected. That's business as a minority, tribal, Hispanic, and poor, okay? Grant was not completed as promised with major issues in compliance. The existing code not enforced should first be corrected. With community involvement, as Planner Hughes mentioned earlier, code currently too confusing to enforce should be stricken or modified, that's my opinion, with clarity as a benchmark." So you go back, you look at what's been enforced, and that stuff, obviously, everybody understands it. They understand the rules of the road. You look at the things that haven't been enforced and say, hmm, can we do without this? Now let's rewrite the code, after we dump the stuff we don't need. We can rewrite the stuff there so we can enforce it, but that's something that you can actually discuss in, you know, a meeting with everybody in the community. "Okay, public debate is considerable and must not be ignored. You need transparency. Discussions should be placed foremost by planning and empower the citizens. And finally, follow the outreach plans initially set within Heart and Soul Phase 3." And that's everything I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening. One thing I learned from teaching is never follow your student's teaching. I don't know why I've got to follow him now, but my name's Ed Rice. I live at 27980 Road M. Don't let that mislead you. I have four rental properties on Madison.
With community involvement, as Planner Hughes mentioned earlier, code currently too confusing to enforce should be stricken or modified, that's my opinion, with clarity as a benchmark. So you go back, you look at what's been enforced, and that stuff, obviously, everybody understands it. They understand the rules of the road. You look at the things that haven't been enforced and say, "Hmm, can we do without this? Now let's rewrite the code." After we dump the stuff we don't need. We can rewrite the stuff there so we can enforce it, but that's something that you can actually discuss in, you know, a meeting with everybody in the community. Okay? Public debate is considerable and must not be ignored. You need transparency. Discussions should be placed foremost by planning and empower the citizens. And finally, follow the outreach plans initially set within Heart and Soul Phase Three. And that's everything I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One thing I learned from teaching is never follow your students' teaching. I don't know why I've got to follow him now. But my name's Ed Rice. I live at 27980 Road M. Don't let that mislead you. I have four rental properties on Madison. I have one on Barrett Street, one on Sligo, one on Mesa Verde, one on Aldridge, and a commercial property on North Park Street. Totalling well over 8,000 in property taxes that I pay into Cortez every year, even though I don't sleep here. Okay? Hope to show you tonight that the land use policy creates an undue burden on businesses of Cortez. According to the Small Business Administration, there are over 28 million small businesses in the U.S. Sadly enough, only about one-third of those survive 10 years. And only about 50% will actually survive to be a business. The number-one reason for failure, according to the Small Business Administration, is what they call "lack of planning." Within this category is the planning needed to satisfy regulations. In the proposed plan, there are ten pages dedicated to landscaping for commercial businesses. There are sixteen pages that address signing, signage, and seventeen pages that address parking. I don't even know how many other pages there are out of the 430-some pages or whatever there is. It's hard to get a total number on that. If you're starting a new business today, that's pretty overwhelming for somebody starting up, to try to sort through all that and figure out what they're doing. Yet you make a provision in this plan for a historic preservation board, but totally ignore the input for the business community. On page 219, you require a business to have one overstory tree, two ornamental trees, and two shrubs for every 2,000 square foot of landscape. As a business owner, I appreciate having that landscaping, but I would also appreciate the council taking care of the problem of my customers having to walk out of my building to watch homeless peeing on those trees. Because that's a real issue. I do appreciate some of the language for the signage, so that Cortez doesn't look like East Colfax. And if some of you need to know a better description of East Colfax, I'll be glad to meet with you later. One of the fastest-growing state economies right now is not New York. Of all places, it's Idaho. And they attribute this totally to being business-friendly when it comes to regulation. In the existing plan Cortez is currently using, not the proposed plan, the existing plan, on the very front of that you have six main objectives on the front page. This entire plan should be based around those six main objectives, I would assume. Number one on your current plan is to lessen the congestion in the streets. Yet the city built concrete barriers down Main Street so that if there's more than one vehicle in the left turn lane, it blocks traffic on that inside lane, or a pickup in a trailer, and blocks traffic all the way down. Six main objectives, and you didn't even honor number one there. There are many vague terms used throughout the proposed plan. Number 101.04 uses the term "material changes." This term leaves a lot for interpretation. On page 10, number 15, and this is where my teaching sarcasm that some of my students can relate to, I'm sure. On page 10, number 15, you're going to regulate sexually-oriented businesses in a manner that will promote public health, safety, and morals. I would love to hear each of your ideas on how you promote morals in those sexually-oriented businesses. I have no doubt there are some changes, geez, I've been watching the time, that need to happen, but look at the existing plan and make those changes. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. I guess I'll time that one just right.
My name is Elizabeth Berger, and I live on 11493 Road 29. Yes, English is my second language. Yes, there is some barriers sometimes. First of all, I would like the opportunity to thank Karen Sheik for, to start and allow a conversation, to start and allow everybody to be here and actually, yeah, reinforce it that we talk to each other and bringing up the idea with the focus groups. And I learned over the last several weeks that we have a lot of people that may, that have a lot of different backgrounds, a lot of different experiences, that they would like to donate to the new land use code, to make it a good code and to make it work. Thank you, Karen, for your, for bringing us together and starting that focus group idea and the conversations. When I was attending the last Planning and Zoning meeting in here last week, I was disappointed by the update Tracy provided to the members of that committee, and it was just very unclear and not really detailed, no follow-up prepared. And I felt that this was a waste of Mayor Sheik's time as well as a waste of my time. Mayor Sheik was actually sitting there, and if she wanted to get anything out of it, it was, "Well, maybe there are 20 or 30 letters, I don't know," and they are basically all the same. And the Planning and Zoning members let that go. There was no backup. There was no questions asked, "Hey, where are the letters? What is the concentration of it? What is it about?" Nope. Okay, fine. So what a waste of Karen's time and my time. So coming from that point, I was disappointed of the quality of the update. If this is the quality of work that's put into the land use code, no wonder that we are at where we are today. Five years of that. Even though I need to admit that Tracy took her time out of the blue and spent an hour to explain to me certain questions of the land use code. Yes, and I very much appreciated it. And during that one-on-one session, I asked Tracy about the railroad station section in this town. And she tried to find it in the first chapters, and she said, "There's nothing in it." And I said, "Tracy, there is something in it. I know it. Maybe it's not railroad station, maybe it's railroad." "No, there's nothing in it, but we have a section about an airport." And I was like, "What? An airport in this town? Yeah, a new airport in case we want one." So, okay, I went back home, I asked around, well, I used the wrong word, it's "trail yard" that's in it. Tracy has worked on that code for five years. Wouldn't you think that she would know about those things? Wouldn't you think that she could address it? So I definitely was a little bit disappointed about that. But thank you, Karen, for allowing the conversation. Thank you, everybody, for listening.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Bonnie Layton, I'm the Four Corners Board of Realtors president this year, and I don't have a lot to say. All I wanted to say is that as Realtors, we would be happy to work with you and to work with Planning and Zoning on the evaluation of it, or if you need help or anything like that. We're always willing to be on your committees. Thank you.
I'm here, I live at 405 North Henry Street.
Ray, Ray Goodall? Ray, Ray is your first name?
Yeah. Ray.
Right, okay.
I go by Ray. I'd appreciate you reading that and explaining that. Sue? Mike?
Thanks.
I want you to know I'm a veteran. I'm retired from the Navy. I'm going to read most of this to you. I was looking for Lance McDaniel's tonight. He's been putting things slanderous on Facebook concerning the veterans of Monizuma County. Doesn't sit good with me. I'm here tonight to express the misconduct that Lance McDaniel's has expressed through spatial media, by expressing his disgraceful opinion he has toward the veterans, by stating, "These damn veterans have won again." The city donated a park to the veterans recently. And we were very appreciative of that. That changed a lot of attitudes. And I was just appalled when I read that. There's a lot of veterans here. Over 200 of us. And we would most likely serve again if we were called to do so. I know I would. I'm a member of the VFW. Used to be a member of the DAV. But I was just appalled when I, when I... I'm a member of the American Legion. I remember when it was built. I was born out here on the front porch of a ranch house at Ariola. Ed Kemper was my first teacher. I've been here all my life. I made it four years old. I went to all my schools here. I joined the service in 1955. My war was Korea, or the finishing of it. I was on a troop transport, carrying 1,000 Marines, 300 sailors. I served my last few years with the Sixth Fleet of the North Atlantic. You want a ride to talk about, go up there. Go up north. But, Orlie, read what I just gave you, please. You know me.
I'd feel more comfortable if you read it. Go ahead and you read it, senor.
I didn't hear you.
I was going to say, go ahead and let you read it.
I'd like to do any form of information, sir. Sure. Go ahead.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, it'd be better if you read it.
And give me back my copy. By the way, there's about 300 of us Goodalls in this valley. I don't need no clock. He made a statement, I don't understand this stuff, says, "Sorry to hear South Park was not the number-one choice of a name for the park. Should I demand to see the results and request a recount?" I don't even know where the hell he's coming from. Then down below, he put, "The damn veterans won again. We've won everything we've tried to do, outnumbered or otherwise. And we can do it again." I love this country. I worked a long time for Caltrans in California. My last job was inspecting the location and building wharfs at Long Beach and setting the cranes in place, download ships that comes in. But I tell you, I was just appalled when I found that, and it was brought to my attention. Your veterans, if you walk through some of our hospitals, you wouldn't believe what our doctors are doing, what our doctors has to do. My youngest son was killed last March in Las Vegas after serving two rotations in Iraq and one in Afghanistan. And he was Army, too, for your information. But he got a job in construction, building a new casino in Las Vegas. The forklift he was on blowed a hydraulic line and dropped the load on him. He lived about three and a half hours. But both my boys, my oldest boy is your new water foreman in Cortez. He's here now, Scott Goodall. And many of you will get to meet him. But we're very proud, and we would all, all the Goodalls, there's been a slew of us served in our military, not all in the Navy. But I found that civilian life was too rough for me. So I quit and joined the service and went to Korea, which was a hell of a lot easier and probably better for me, too. Thank you, Orlie.
Mr. Goodall, I would like to thank you and your family for your service. I, I think that this posting was most unfortunate. I said, "I think that this posting was most unfortunate." It was not done in good taste, and I think that this is a prime example of some of the pitfalls of social media. When you post things on social media, your audience doesn't have the advantage of hearing the inflection of your voice, the expression on your face to see exactly what message you're trying to convey. And it's, I understand your concern and why you're appalled at this. I must admit, I feel the same way.
Ray, I'd like to make a comment also. I'm also a veteran. I thank you for your service. I believe the park that Mr. McDaniel was talking about was the new neighborhood park south of town, not, and it got kind of confused with the new park, the city park, which has been renamed Veterans Park. And I can't speak for Mr. McDaniel, but I believe that he is trying to make a humorous reference to the fact that, about the naming of the parks. Like Mayor Sheik says, things that are written in social media are hard to interpret if you read it out of context. I don't believe that Mr. McDaniel felt antagonistic toward veterans. I believe that he respects veterans. That's my opinion. You'd have to talk to Mr. McDaniel, but I think a lot of this has been read out of context, and that, I think it's a big misunderstanding. That's my opinion.
I think if you get off Facebook and apologize, I think we can put it at that.
Okay. I'm sure if you could, if you could meet with Mr. McDaniel, I believe you would...
I have public comment related to this specific issue. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I was part of that thread, and it was a mistake in a lot of ways. I, you know, we owe our lives to veterans. There's no ill will at all. Lance, in fact, he monitors how people are raising flags in public places, and he's the only person I've ever seen consistently report when somebody is being unpatriotic and incorrectly raising their flag, and it's called Monizuma County Flag Watch. It's a Facebook page. You can go check it out. Like, he's one of the most patriotic, sweet people I know. And what happened was, he was out of context. He thought he was commenting because there was an earlier comment about the city doing a poll to name the South Park. And so when that article came out, he was sarcastically joking to a friend of his who's a decorated veteran, and he was being completely sarcastic about, you know, joking about, like, where's South Park going to come up in that poll? And so it was an inside joke that he had on Facebook misconstrued, and it, you know, and that's the comment that, because I'm in that thread, and I said, "Yeah, recall." It was a joke, and it got, it was a poor joke. We understand that. I don't know, I mean, I can't speak for Lance, but, I mean, he has the biggest heart, and he has so much respect for service men and women of all kind in this country. And I know, I am truly sorry for adding fuel to something that was completely inappropriate. I've totally decided to go as much off Facebook and in the dark as my job will allow me to have, because I didn't want to hurt people's feelings. But at the same time, there's been response to those that are out of control, like lynching and... and hanging us. Like, what the fuck? I'm sorry. I just, I'm scared and I know you guys aren't bad people and I know you, everybody wants the best for the community and I know that there was anger. I'm trying to apologize, but at the same time, there's been so much hatred and it's palpable and it just, I just want it to stop, you know? And if you guys wanna talk about Lance, the city council, just as a procedural thing, you can't talk about appointed official unless you have it during a public hearing, no executive session, and you can't talk about him or censuring him or me or anybody unless you agendize that, have a public hearing. So, I just wanna set that out there. But, you know, I know both of us deeply, or at least me, but I'm pretty sure Lance even more so deeply regrets that Facebook thread in so many ways. So, I personally am apologizing to you now and it's not, not because I feel threatened for my life. I do realize that that was a mistake. And even if we thought we were being silly and funny, it's just inappropriate at all to make fun of anybody, even though that's not what the intent was. It was a sarcastic thing about the idea of South Park. Anyways, it was stupid and I'm, I'm really sorry for that. Um, I'm Rebecca Levy. I'm the chair of the Planning Commission right now, so I'm speaking as an individual about this and somebody who got wrapped into something and by accident. It's just a horrible social media lesson about what not to do as a public person. So, you know, it's really, I'm really sorry.
Thank you, thank you Rebecca. I know that that was hard.
Also, sorry for swearing. Just-
I think, I, I think there's a lesson in this for all of us.
I believe this is on. Mr. Don Kirk. I live at nine west Second Street in Portez. The words, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands." These are words that mean a great deal to me. I'm seventy-four years of age. I have been saying the Pledge of Allegiance since I was a Goodall. And, I don't think they have ever meant as much to me as they do these days. To the republic, not to the democracy, not to socialism, and certainly not to the Congress. I believe that there are those people who are attempting to bring us closer and closer to a different state. They are attempting to take away our rights, our First Amendment rights, Second Amendment rights, the right to freedom of speech, the right to bear arms. I believe that this proposal we've been talking about is a pure example of taking the rights away from individuals. I came to Cortez sixteen years ago. I fell in love with the area. I fell in love with the diversity here, with the people, with the possibilities for this community. I do not want to see that change. I do not want to see us turned into something that we will all be ashamed of. I ask each and every individual on this panel to consider what is the most important part of being here in Cortez. I'm proud of it. I'll stand by it and I will fight for it.
Does anyone else wish to address council?
My name is Jeremy Henley. I live at two five five west Fourth Street. Excuse me. And this, this was written before tonight's bookshop, so I have to say that some of this should be resolved. City Council and energy staff did not do enough to involve the greater populace and gather their own, what we want to drive to. Whether they are any few persons and city employees or senior limited design units, several committees, shaking their convene, including local business owners, customers, and all built-in groups of Cortez. There should be the private hierarchy company to write the new into this code. And, um, it was stated in the, I wrote the code myself. All four hundred is on my papers. No one can have any information. So, if I'm confused, it's because my main objection to the code is that the language throughout were ambiguous and subject to interpretation. Coming through a sky, a different language, they will ensure fair and equitable treatment of homeowners and business governments by current and future city employees. There are also numerous errors in the document that's not up and should not be implemented at that point. And as far as being confusing, I worked for one of the top, one of the four major telecommunications companies for thirty-seven years. I spent the last ten years on national staff. I worked with the F six state and the state governments of eighteen different states. So, I'm used to reading libraries. This is so confusing. I sent Tracy a four-page document of issues. So, if I'm confused, it's because the language is indecisive. It also jumps around. You shouldn't have to go from section three to section seven, back to section eleven. It should be, I'm, I'm destroying my memory for a bit. I'm wrong. And, um, it, it should all be concise in one place. If I'm confused, I guarantee city employees are not confused. I'm not used to the intelligence of city employees. And if I'm confused, your city employees are also confused. So, that's going to, to lead to misinterpretation, the, um, applying the law in an unfair, in a disproportionate authority. I told them I will be more than happy to sit on the committee. I will chair the committee for residential customers and homes.
City Council, um, my name is Sheri Noyes. I live at two five three zero three hundred twenty-three left field. And so, yes, this even affects us out in Pennsylvania. I own property in town. I sent you a letter, um, via email, so I won't waste a lot of time, but I just wanted to know that, to hear my voice. I want you to hear me say that I, I urge you to do the responsible thing and vote no, um, and really take a look at how this is going to affect people in the future. Have a big block that, um, eventually you either want to develop and will not be able to, or can't sell because of the, the code that we put in that nobody can develop it. A house we'd like to remodel eventually someday. Don't know if that'll happen, but, um, when it does, if it does, um, it would be a lot easier and it would look a lot better, um, to the public eye. Because right now it's very, I like my knees and two breaths out. So, I just urge you to do the responsible thing and vote no on the twenty.
I'm Joe Gray. I live at seven fourteen Parker Road. Well, you know, I'm really confused over the whole deal because until just two weeks ago, I didn't even know any of this people was around. I was born and raised here in Cortez and, you know, fifty-eight years old. What gets me is, okay, we're changing all traffic codes without the public truly knowing what he was talking about. That's exactly because I did not know. I didn't plan to come here to speak, right? But what I, what gets me is, south of town, we've got buildings owned by the city. But yeah, we got graffiti all the way on everywhere. What's going on there? Nothing. We got a law here in town that, you know, these people can steal from the store. But yet, the judges won't sentence them because if it's not, you know, eight hu- eight hundred dollars. There's no law, so they have to let them go. I think we need to correct some of this, you know, and, and literally, you know, like he said, let's, you know, the ordinance is good. I've lived in a lot of states. I do believe that, you know, ordinance done correctly to help the people. That's what we need to do. We need to help this town. I've seen this town, you know, all my life. I've been there, a lot of the town. I've seen bad ordinances. I've seen them destroy towns. It's like any business. If you don't do your business right, don't plan right, you will destroy. And that's all I really have to say. I just think that we ought, think of the city as, you know, you guys, you guys appear on the board to help the city. And I think, I should've known about this. I mean, I was born and raised here, but until somebody brought it up, you know, just a few weeks ago, I didn't know anything about this ordinance to be all changed. Where, where is the, you know, I, I think it should be sent to every person in town. I should, I think we do not have big means, not little means. And I think, you know, it's good that we got people coming up here talking and bringing up the points. And I, but I get it. I do believe that needs to be said, no, on this. And start over.
Anybody else? Okay. You have some other city business, so we're gonna go ahead and-
I'd like to run an air.
I thought you ceded your time.
My first order.
Okay. All right.
I'm here to comment on, um, the article in the, it's called "The Internet TV and the Call to Do With the New U" and Tracy Hughes. I don't know about you, but I found him to be, um, very honest and very correct in what I said. I hope they didn't say the same thing to you. You've talked about misconceptions in the public. I think part of that is coming from the city. First thing you say is, uh, the, uh-
That's right.
Sorry. I don't think the look is giving up the attitude. Perfect. So, it says here, "The city officials say the new code is developed through a lengthy and very public process." From what I've seen, there was at least a two-year gap in the meeting whatsoever. And the, the other, a lot of the other meetings that were referred to were workshops, which we found out tonight we're not really supposed to be able to comment at. Thank you very much for letting me. One other, another thing that you stated was that you made modest increases to the land use code in, in building and landscaping. You took the landscaping from ten percent to fifteen percent. According to my math teacher, that is not a modest increase. That is a fifty percent increase in the cost of land landscaping. Landscaping is a very, very expensive thing when you're building. And on top of that, you've added that we have to put in a bridge. Tracy Hughes, Tracy Hughes states that we only do what the state says. If that's true, why does this kid, the city have a code? It's one dash nine, I believe, that is a code to supersede state laws in case of a conflict that's to be, goes to standard. And also, the state does not decide on your babysitting. They regulate babysitting, but they do not decide, determine, and you can't. And yes, this does affect residential because the current land use code allows you to babysit children in your own home. The new, the proposed land use code, it will become a limited use and you will have to go through the limited use process to the city, which will include having two or extra concrete, off-street parking and things like that. So, some of the misconceptions are coming from the city. The land use code does not, the current land use code does not include the term extra territory and it does not cite the state statutes that go with that.
I want to give Dave a moment.
I'm sorry, I'm almost done. Thank you. One last comment is, Mr. McDaniel is an embarrassment to this town. If you have ever-
Dave, I, Dave, excuse me. I don't, I don't think this is the, no, no, no. This is not the time or place to do that. Thank you. We, this is, this muddling needs to stop. This is not, it doesn't do anything for our community. It just is divisive and, um, unpleasant, to say the least. Can you speak into the mic?
I'm in New York, I'm in New York. And we heard about this.
And what's your address, sir? Your address?
Eight twenty-seven Arrowhead Lane. Okay. This sounds like we're trying to make it into a California. We're not California. We're a small town. We don't need all this extra taxes and, if that's what you want to call it, or levers and whatever. It just sounds like it's what's going on right here. And we work just in New York. We can't afford all that stuff. All the stuff you guys are before you. Just like what you said, you gotta have the extra driveways to do all this stuff. You're gonna babysit, it's crazy. That's all I have to say.
I think she's here too.
Um, hi, my name is Laura Stone. I live at camera at L twenty-four point three. Um, I just want to say thank you to our veterans. I appreciate your service. I have a lot of respect for you guys. And I do, um, I do have an issue with graffiti. In my personal opinion, graffiti does spread a lot of negativity in our community. And I feel as though if the city, or if we could do a fundraiser to donate materials to cover up that graffiti, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any.
Okay. Okay, so we'll open this up to public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against the establishment of this new business? Seeing nobody step forward, I close the public hearing. If counsel has no other questions, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion, approve the new retail liquor license for Paragon Business Investment LLC, DBA The Seller, to be located at 2410 Fairway Drive, Suite B, Cortez. Second, could we go back, and we need to start the, the language that says "after considering," this is a liquor state requirement that it be said this way, that "after considering the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood," we have to make those findings.
Okay.
Go ahead and add that to the motion.
Okay.
Second one, um...
Mike, second.
Second.
Keel?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Lady?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Aye. You got your license.
Thank you.
Do you have a, do you have a timeframe, Mr. Wendy, to plan to open?
Well, you said, was to get your license, but we want everything open together, and there's not a lot of, uh, from your stuff. So, with all this speedway stuff, they've done, we're trying to help the back part of the biggest speedway. So we're trying, one minute, twelve minutes. We hope people are super.
Good. Well, congratulations and best wishes for a successful business. All right. The next item for public hearing is the final reading of ordinance number twelve seventy-two, series twenty nineteen, approving revisions to the City of Cortez Medical and Retail Marijuana Codes and authorizing the issuance of and the regulation of retail marijuana product manufacturing. Mike?
I'll get this. What we did with this is, we moved first off, the retail and the medical marijuana code sections to the same section as alcohol liquor. They were cleaned up a little where there was contradictions and such, and what was added, which is perhaps the most, I don't know, problematic for some, not for others, we authorized a new class of retail marijuana license approval. As you remember, the state issues a license, and all the city really does is approve that license. We don't issue our own. And so, this had been added in based on some comments some people came and made to the workshop that one night. However, since that time, some people have expressed some concerns about doing it at this point in time. And so, you have three recommend, or three possible motions from staff. You can either just approve the ordinance after the public hearing, the way it's written. You can reject the ordinance in toto, the way it's written. Or you could move to strike and remove the authorization for retail manufacturing, which actually, just one sentence, I believe it's at, it's paragraph G of, and I can't find where I wrote it down now, in the code, and it would just simply get rid of that new classification of license, retail manufacturing.
Has this been changed? I was absent from that meeting.
Um, no.
A little in the dark on the three choices.
It's exactly the same ordinances was written before. It's not been changed in any way. Retail manufacturing had been added at the first reading to the ordinance that was proposed. And so, at this particular point in time, you could, like I say, you could leave that in there. You can fail the ordinance in its entirety, or you can reject the ordinance in its entirety, or you could withdraw that one sentence, which would actually be something new to the, added to the code.
Another restriction for it.
And reject retail manufacturing, but yet leave everything else in place the way it currently is.
I think we had a discussion, we had people that actually came to counsel workshop and talked about the addition of this, to be able to do the manufacturing part.
Wait, could you repeat that, please?
I said that we had a discussion at one of our workshops prior to Mike drafting this, at which we had people come and talk about the desire, as they grow their business, to be able to do some of this.
And so, that would be the first one?
Well, that was at a workshop prior to, to this ordinance being drafted.
Right, no, regarding the first...
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Granting the liquor license is applied for by the applicants. All persons contacted were advised of the time and place of a public hearing and were asked, "Do you have an opinion on this liquor license being granted?" The following are the results of the poll. Thirty people were in favor of granting the liquor license, zero people were against granting the license. The location complies with Colorado Liquor Code rules and regulations. Location does not create any known public safety issues or endanger public health. A copy of this report was delivered to the applicants on January tenth, 2020. Thank you.
Chief Brock, just a couple of questions. Did you or one of your employees circulate a petition as stated in their report and collect signatures?
That's correct.
Do you have the original with you tonight?
I do.
Could you submit that, please, to Clerk Smith?
I will.
That's where it was headed next, if the applicants would like to stop.
My name is Mary Hannah Lloyd. I'm one of the applicant Secretary of Public Business Investment. I do circulate a petition. I'll open it up, I guess, and make sure that I didn't have anyone that I talked to that was against it.
And you want this petition to be entered into your final evidence?
Yes. Don't mind. I'm here to help you to open, like, a little boutique type wine liquor store. You got a beer license. I thought it was gonna be easier second time. I feel pretty gauged. So if I mumble.
You're doing fine.
So we got a beer license because the location's meant to be the side we're doing a gas station. But right now it's kind of a last day, so we're working at getting it open so we can handle all of our debt and work the cyber for those liquor licenses. But yeah, just more of a smaller specialty wine from the booze. Nothing made of fancy, I guess. So. Hi, if you have any questions?
I have none. I don't have any.
No questions. You did a good job. You can sit down.
The license, the application, everything submitted appears to comply with both state and Cortez city ordinances. Staff is recommending approval by making the motion that after considering the reasonable requirements, et cetera, council approves the application for liquor, or for fermented malt beverage liquor license.
All right, counsel, does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any.
Okay. Okay, so we'll open this up to public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against the establishment of this new business? Seeing nobody step forward, I close the public hearing. If counsel has no other questions, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the new retail liquor license for Paragon Business Investment LLC, DBA The Cellar, to be located at twenty-four ten Fairway Drive, Suite B, Cortez.
Second, could we go back and we need to start the language that says after considering, this is a liquor state requirement that it be said this way, that after considering the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, we have to make those findings.
Okay.
Go ahead and add that to the motion.
Okay.
Mike, second.
Second.
Keel?
Aye.
Bet?
Aye.
Lady?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Aye. You got your license. Do you have a timeframe, Mr. Winnie, you plan to open?
Well, first I said, we want everything open together, and there's not a lot of the part of your stuff. So with all this speedway stuff, they've done their time well in the back part of the city, it's speedway. So we're trying to, one minute, two minutes, we hope people are over.
Good. Well, congratulations and best wishes for a successful business. All right, the next item for public hearing is the final reading of ordinance number twelve seventy-two, series twenty nineteen, approving revisions to the City of Cortez Medical and Retail Marijuana Codes and authorizing the issuance of and the regulation of retail marijuana product manufacturing. Mike?
I'll get this. What we did with this is we moved, first off, the retail and the medical marijuana code sections to the same section as alcohol liquor. They were cleaned up a little where there was contradictions and such, and what was added, which is perhaps the most, I don't know, problematic for some, not for others, we authorized a new class of retail marijuana license approval. As you remember, the state issues a license and all the city really does is approve that license. We don't issue our own. And so this had been added in based on some comments some people came and made to the workshop that one night. However, since that time, some people have expressed some concerns about doing it at this point in time. And so you have three recommend or three possible motions from staff. You can either just approve the ordinance after the public hearing, the way it's written. You can reject the ordinance in toto, the way it's written, or you could move to strike and remove the authorization for retail manufacturing, which actually, just one sentence, I believe it's at, it's paragraph G of, and I can't find where I wrote it down now, in the code, and it would just simply get rid of that new classification of license, retail manufacturing.
Has this been changed? I was absent from that meeting.
Um, no.
A little in the dark on the three choices.
It's exactly the same ordinance as was written before. It's not been changed in any way. Retail manufacturing had been added at the first reading to the ordinance that was proposed. And so at this particular point in time, you could, like I say, you could leave that in there. You can fail the ordinance in its entirety, or you can reject the ordinance in its entirety, or you could withdraw that one sentence, which would actually be something new to the, added to the code. And reject retail manufacturing, but yet leave everything else in place the way it currently is.
I think we had a discussion, we had people that actually came to council workshop and talked about the addition of this, to be able to do the manufacturing part.
Wait, could you repeat that, please?
I said that we had a discussion at one of our workshops prior to Mike drafting this, at which we had people come and talk about the desire, as they grow their business, to be able to do some of this.
And so that would be the first?
Well, that was at a workshop prior to this ordinance being drafted.
Right, no, regarding the first?
Yes. Are there any questions?
No. Question I had, Mike already mentioned, about striking out that manufacturer. I mean, but everything else looks good to me.
Any other comments?
I have none.
Okay. Okay, so we'll open it up for public hearing, if anybody would like to speak for or against. All right, I close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to strike and remove the authorization for retail marijuana manufacturing license and approve the form ordinance number one-two-seven-two, series two-zero-one-nine, and approve and adopt the balance of ordinance number twelve-seventy-two, series twenty nineteen, and ordinance regarding revisions to the City of Cortez Medical and Retail Marijuana Codes and authorization through the issuance of and the regulation of retail marijuana products within the, within the City of Cortez on the second reading. So we wouldn't put, we wouldn't put that in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bet?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Lady?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye.
No. All right, unfinished business? We have none, so we'll move on to new business. Twenty-twenty joint chemical bid. Rick?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, as we've done in many years, we've coordinated joint chemical bid for the water and sewer plants in the area. The participants in the joint bid this year were the Town of Dolores, Town of Mankas, Monizuma Water Company, and the City of Cortez. The combination, by combining the chemicals used by these plants, we're able to take advantage of the quantity discounts delivered semi-weekly. This has resulted in pretty good cost savings to each individual entity. I'd like to point out that each entity mentioned awards their own chemicals and that are used by their plants and are responsible for the purchase orders and payments over the course of the award. The bid opening was held on November twenty-seventh. We had nine responses to the proposal, and this bid is awarded on an individual item basis to take advantage of the best cost per item. And we've a tabulation for you to look at, long and short of it, the City of Cortez portion of the twenty-twenty joint chemical bid would be a hundred and seventy-three thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any.
May I have a motion?
I make a motion, considering awarding the twenty-twenty joint commercial bid to the individual highland that are highlighted vendors on the total city. Cortez award one hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second. Lady?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Bet?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye. Resolution number one, series twenty-twenty, the first one of the new year. Counsel will consider approving replacing resolution number sixteen, series twenty-seventeen, establishing an annual discount at city facilities for city volunteers by adding the Cortez Youth Commission to the list. Peyton?
Good evening, City Council. I mean, Karen even kind of summed it up, but at the December tenth workshop, City Council discussed adding the Youth Commission to what was resolution number sixteen, twenty-seventeen, that allowed volunteers to take advantage of a discount to city facilities. The discount amounts to about seventy-five dollars per individual, and the Youth Commission allows up to fifteen members, so the most it costs the city for this discount is one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. The students, they commit a lot of time, two hours at least a month. They're excited, they're ready to serve the city, and they're volunteer, like all the other boards and committees, so. Staff recommends that city approve resolution number one, series twenty-twenty, updating the Volunteer Committee annual discount.
Any questions, counsel?
I don't have any.
May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number one, series twenty-twenty, replacing resolution number sixteen, series twenty-seventeen, establishing an annual discount at city facilities for city volunteers, adding the Cortez Youth Commission to that list.
Second.
Lady?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Bet?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye. The next item is appointment of two new student members. Are they still here?
They left.
Kind of a, we should have put them at the beginning.
Yeah, so we have two students applying for the Youth Commission. We have Grace Olson and Dorian Hilliard, and they both came tonight, and they were excited for the appointments, but it did get late and it is a school night. We actually had another Youth Commission student show up tonight, and she was here in support. She actually got up and talked during public comment, which is brave for a high schooler. But both students have gone through our interview process. They get interviewed by their peers, so we have two officers typically that'll interview the students. Both officers, being Chair Nika Lewis, who's been with our commission for over a year, and Laura Stone, who is here tonight, she's our secretary, both recommend that counsel approve both students to appointment. And they've been attending meetings regularly. They're great kids, they have a lot of energy, and staff recommends that counsel approve the appointments.
Counsel, questions, comments?
I don't have any.
None.
All right, may I have a motion?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Grace Olson and Dorian Hilliard to the Cortez Youth Commission.
Second.
Keel?
Aye.
Bet?
Aye.
Lady?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye. Thank you, Peyton.
Thanks.
A quasi judicial item, again, the ground rules that I read earlier apply to this engine item as well, is the transfer of ownership of a hotel and restaurant liquor license for the Farm Bistro. Linda?
What we have here is a simple transfer of ownership, which could have been done in a, in the consent agenda, but because there were some items that needed to be addressed between the owner and the city and the new, and the purchaser, I guess we'd call it, there was some sales tax delinquencies, which the city has been able to collect or make arrangements to collect. And so the staff now has a clear sailing to recommend transfer this license to the new owners, so they can move forward.
Does, Linda, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I'm thankful for Jean's help in getting everything cleared up, so that we can move this forward, and it worked real well for us to get everything completed with Mike, that he required for us to change this transfer. Doesn't require a public hearing, since the farm already has a current liquor license, so we can transfer this by this meeting.
Just making a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, if there are no questions or comments, can I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to approve the transfer of ownerships of a hotel and restaurant liquor license from the Farm Bistro located at thirty-four West Main Street, Cortez, from Seven Meadows Farm Limited Liability Company, Charles and Lori Hall, to the Farm Bistro, Cortez Limited Liability Company, Jean Powell and Timothy Russo.
Second.
Hope you could hear me.
Lucero?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Bet?
Aye.
Lady?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye. Congratulations.
I was in there not too long ago, and you've already, you're already working the place. You've done a nice job. We're gonna take a short break. I'm sure probably some of you need to get up and stretch your legs, if nothing else. So be back in, by nine fifteen.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, they wouldn't. Yeah. All right, we are gonna reconvene. The next item on the agenda is an intergovernmental agreement with the Monizuma County Clerk and the Recorder regarding the upcoming election, Linda.
Yes, this intergovernmental agreement is completed every two years with the Monizuma County Clerk and Recorder when we start the process for the election, which will be held on Tuesday, April seventh. It outlines the responsibilities for them and for us in this process. It also includes who will pay for what and which piece they will perform for us, such as the election judges, they will provide the election judges the equipment, and they will help us count the ballots on election day. I had Mike review the intergovernmental agreement prior to putting it in, and he has given his okay with it, so I'm moving it forward to get it signed with City Council.
Any questions, concerns, counsel?
I have none.
I need a motion, please.
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Monizuma County Clerk and Recorder and the City of Cortez, defining the roles that each will play in the Cortez Municipal Election to be held on April seventh, twenty-twenty.
Second.
Keel?
Aye.
Bet?
Aye.
Lady?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, a quasi judicial item to set a public hearing date for a new retail marijuana store license for New View Pharma LLC. Mike?
This matter is reset because after an appeal to the District Court, the judge remanded or sent it back. This matter is coming back before you from a previous hearing. The judge remanded or sent it back after a Rule one-oh-six appeal, as they're called, of the council's decision. Some of the suggestions that the judge made or were in that new ordinance you approved this evening about the neighborhood and some things like that. What the attorney for New View has asked, that we set it for the second meeting in February, he is currently asking the District Court for some guidance as to, on some questions he has about procedures and things. It's possible that the hearing may have to be canceled if the judge doesn't give us an answer before then. If he does, then we're asking that the hearing be set on February twentieth, or twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty at this time, so we're moving forward on this.
How realistic is that, they'll get back to him on that? Or is it just who knows?
I gotta be honest with judges making decisions on things like this, it's gonna be kind of who knows, depending on what else he's got on his plate that, you know, in priorities. If he's got a murder trial or something big, that's gonna take more of his time than this. If he's got nothing else, yeah, I'd recommend setting it at this point in time.
Well, we know at least two weeks out if we need to.
We'll know, yes, sir. We'll know and be able to do something. We're still working through some of the details with New View through both myself and the Denver attorney.
Okay.
All right, may I have a motion, please?
Honorable Mayor, I make a motion to set the public hearing date of February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, for the review of a new retail marijuana store license for New View Pharma Limited Liability Company to be tentatively addressed as twenty-seven sixty-two East Main Street, Cortez.
Second.
Bet?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lady?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye. We discussed this letter of support for comprehensive system for transportation information in the region, and it was discussed at the workshop. Does anybody have any questions that didn't get answered?
I'm just running a little late from work, so what was it?
John, do it real quickly.
This is written in regards to the Southwest Colorado Council of Governments applying for a grant for a five-county area to do a pilot program on mass transit and put in a system for the five counties that's a one-click or one-call to make arrangements for essentially anybody who needs transportation, whether it's medical or other things. But this is, has been identified as a need in the five counties, and the COG wants to try and take it on and see if they can't get the pilot program started in our area.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Fine, thank you.
All right, may I have a motion, please?
May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for comprehensive system for transportation information in the region as a request for FTA mobility through all pilot programs. And this is for the comprehensive system for transportation information in the region.
Second.
Lady?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Bet?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye. A contract extension for Chris Burkett. John?
Burkett and Company submitted a, a contract extension, and I guess I'm staff, would highly recommend it. He brings in far more grant money than what we pay him to administer and put those grants out. He has been doing this for a number of years, and he has been extremely successful.
Yes.
Best dollars you ever spent.
There is, there's something beneficial about him, because he's able to call people and get answers and help, and he's got relationships with people throughout the state. So he's unknown commodity of the state, which means a lot for us.
Relationships always comes down to relationships.
Makes my job easy, the secretary.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we approve a contract extension for Burkett Company LLC at an hourly rate of forty-two, twenty-three per hour.
Second. Lady?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Lucero?
Aye.
Bet?
Aye.
Sheek?
Aye. We have no draft resolutions or ordinances, no other items of business at this time. Would a citizen like to address the council? Please say no.
Round two.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. There is no city attorney's report. John, do you have anything to add?
No, make it real short, nope.
Committee reports. Mike? Oh, okay. All right, well, okay. Two, really quickly. We had a Mesa Verde Country meeting. The one I'm reporting on is a November, December meeting. We had a meeting just the other day, but we didn't have a, we didn't have a quorum, so we just use that as a wonderful opportunity to be able to kind of bat some ideas around. Mesa Verde Country saw a forty-six point nine percent increase across all their marketing channels from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. So it's pretty, pretty impressive. I think Kelly's doing a great job. They're, they're making some changes to the website to make it a little bit more user-friendly, easier for her to be able to track where requests are coming from, and they've reduced the numbers of pages, so that people aren't overwhelmed. They find that the majority of states that are viewing our website are Colorado, California, Illinois, Texas, and Utah, and the cities that visited are Denver, Chicago, Durango, Colorado Springs, Dallas, Phoenix, and Salt Lake, which probably doesn't come as much of a surprise. We talked about the importance of purposeful targeted growth, and you all might be interested in knowing that based on twenty nineteen, that lodging, recreation is up by one, up from one percent, is up from one to two percent. Food and beverage, and this is in this community, is up three percent, and retail purchase is up two percent, so that's always a plus. Tourism accounts for about fifteen percent of our economy, so it's an important driver. And the focus for this coming year will be to get the tourists not only to come here, but to spend a little more while they're here. Maybe stay a day longer or have an additional meal in one of our restaurants, something like that. The Welcome Center now has, they had a visitation number of twenty-five hundred for November and December, and they now have thirteen volunteer travel counselors. So that in and of itself is a leap forward. The. The COG meeting was held on December the 12th. We did have a, we did have a presentation on Gallagher and Tabor, and some of the things that are kind of of a foot at the State House, how they might address some of the areas of concern that these two pieces of legislation are causing the state in general. And that's probably, that was probably the most interesting and most important from that meeting. And then from the workshop, we had a full workshop tonight. We talked about the letter of support for the regional comprehensive system for transportation, and that actually is a COG-based item. We had a nice update on the Public Arts Committee. They, that group of people have really done a wonderful job. They've, I think they've, I think they've really highlighted the arts in this community, and the next project has to do with a literary piece of art, so they're, they're not just focusing on the visual arts. It was also Eric Iaconoy's last official meeting. He has accepted a position in Oregon, and he'll be leaving soon to take that, so we're really, really sorry to see Eric leave. Phil Johnson, our Public Works Director, came and talked about a possible CDOT grant that would allow the city to provide some, about a third of the funds necessary to improve our sidewalks and handicap access on areas south of town. The Finance Director, Ben Burkett, gave us a finance update. We're, we're looking forward. There was a discussion of an offer for leasing of space, which actually wound up not being so much. Initially, it was to possibly have the city purchase a piece of property, but then it evolved into a discussion on offers to lease space, and council indicated that they didn't feel we really needed to do that at this point. And then we had line use code update from Tracy. Does anybody else have anything else to add for the good of the city?
I would just like to say, you know, thank you. I appreciate citizen participation. I wish everyone else was still here. You know, that is the backbone of a democracy. And I thank you guys for being here.
I agree with this, and you?
And we hope you come on other days when it's not a hot button issue, because the day-to-day business of the city is, I'm always interested when people say, "I didn't know anything about that." Well, we have a website. You can sign up for alerts from the city. Articles are put in the paper. We have staff that regularly give radio interviews. There are lots of ways to get information, but probably the most, the most efficient way to get it is to call and come down. And you can come down and say, "Is there anything new? What's going on?" Or, "I've heard rumors about this and so." And I will tell you, the staff is more than happy to sit down, as one woman who spoke this evening said. Tracy spent an hour visiting with her earlier this week. So we're here. We're interested. We're ready to, to share and address your concerns, but you have to do your part, which means you have to come and let us know. So, thank you. You can all go home. Eric is leaving. No. Said Eric Iaconoy.